We're going to call to order, we're going to call to order the Effingham County Board of Commissioners meeting this July 2nd, 2024 at 5:06. And we may possibly have our hopefully quickest meeting we've had, we can start our 4th of July a little earlier. We begin with roll call, Mr. Floyd.
Here.
Mr. Burdette.
Here.
Mr. Corbett's here, Mr. Deloach.
Here.
Mr. Kiefer.
Here.
Everyone's in attendance, we have a quorum, I'm going to ask everyone if they please stand for the invocation given by Commissioner Deloach and remain standing as he leads us also in the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag.
Please bow your heads. Dear Lord, thank you for giving us this opportunity to come together and try to move our communities forward, Lord. Please be with us through this process and help us to do your will. Please keep everyone safe this week and next week, as I know that's a very popular time of the year for everybody to be on the road and traveling, so please be with us and our families and friends. Please help us remember that all good things come through you, Lord, and in your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have our agenda before tonight, I understand there are no additions or corrections to this agenda, so we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Mr. Burdette, second, Mr. Floyd, to approve the agenda as presented, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, hearing no, no's, we have our agenda. Next is consideration to approve the June 18th, 2024 work session and regular meeting minutes, are there any corrections or additions to those minutes, or a motion to approve both?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Deloach, second, Mr. Floyd, to approve the minutes as presented, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, hearing no, no's, it passes unanimously. Welcome everyone to the meeting tonight, comments shall pertain to the agenda items only, please, should you wish to make a remark, clearly state your name, come to the podium, state your name into the microphone, and then commence making your remarks, keeping the two to three minutes, that will help everyone have a chance to speak tonight. The correspondence for this agenda, the packet meeting is posted in the county's website, on the county's website, any additional documents presented at the meeting shall be submitted to our clerk rather than to us, and she will record those and distribute to the board appropriately. And with that, we'll move into our consent agenda, there's only two items on our consent agenda. Item number one, consideration to approve, to renew an agreement from Eagleview for pictometry flights, I don't know if I read that right. Consideration to approve an agreement with Rave Mobile Safety for mass emergency notification, do we have a motion to approve, the consent agenda is read?
I think we missed a page or something.
No, I think you skipped a page.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have to get that last, let me start again.
It's number two.
Thank you, let me start again, we have two items on our consent agenda, I did get that part right. First one is consideration to approve, to renew an agreement from Eagleview for pictometry flights, and the second one was consideration to approve, to ratify and affirm contract with the state of Georgia for continue as a fiscal agent for family connection. Now, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Kiefer, second, Mr. Deloach, to approve the consent agenda as read, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, hearing no, no's, our consent agenda is approved. Moving to unfinished business, item number one, consideration to approve the second reading of request by Bryant Legion as agent for TNT 9G LLC to rezon, 288.36 acres located on Midland Road, excuse me, from AR1 to I1 to PDR to allow for the residential development. Map number 396, parcel number 62 and 62A in the second district, first reading was approved on June 18th. Do we have a motion to approve the second reading?
Can we bring up any questions, or?
Sure.
Okay, just got a couple here, I think I know the answers to them, but just wanted to make sure, so with the original concept plan, once we do, I guess there's a flood study that's being done that has to go to FEMA. And I told Steve about this earlier, but, so we're sure that this flood study, the developer submits that to FEMA and it's not the county?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and so with this flood study, the concept plan could change a lot theoretically.
Yes, and any wetlands delineation, all that kind of stuff could change it.
Okay, so I see that staff has recommended that we do a traffic study, and so what happens when the traffic study is completed? I mean, what if they say, hey, you know, at the end of this development, there's going to be 3,000 trips added, or however many it is, you know, we think there needs to be a turn lane on the road, and, I mean, does the developer come into county and say, hey, here's your bill, or this is what you need to foot, or, you know, this is what you need to cover, or is developer covering that, or, that was just kind of vague?
So the traffic study is a requirement for that size of a subdivision, and that is on the developer to provide the study, and any improvements, there has been no development agreement with the county or the developer, so that is something that, you know, the developer would be responsible for.
Yeah, and traditionally, I mean, the developer's always been responsible for implementing any of the recommendations of the traffic study.
Yes.
And that would change here.
Okay, so if they come back and the traffic study says, hey, you know, with this much traffic, we think you need to widen the entire road, which I wouldn't think the developer would be on the hook for widening the entire road, but is there, I don't know if anything like that's ever come up, but that's just a question I thought about.
What the traffic study will say is what sort of mechanisms that they would need to get in and out of the neighborhood, and so with something this size, with this entrance, I would imagine there's going to be a recommendation for a left turn lane, center left turn lane, which is going to require them to widen the road, because you got to get another lane in there. And more than likely, a acceleration lane coming out of the neighborhood as well, but, but will, the traffic study will, will determine that.
So be similar to Parkers at 17 and 30 right there, Blue Jay, where they had the left-hand turn in the acceleration lane.
Okay.
So is the stipulation, because I want to hear the last meaning, that if the traffic study makes recommendations, they will build them?
Yes.
Or is it optional?
No.
No, they won't be able to, they, they won't be able to get approved for, I mean, it's a requirement to meet the, the request of the traffic study.
Okay.
So you're, yeah, so preliminary plat is next after this, which as Commissioner Deloach, that could change based on the FEMA study and anything else, and then after preliminary plat is the final plat, if those improvements are not in place that were required.
Those come after the study.
Those come after the study, if those improvements are not in place, they don't get certificate of, I mean, building permits, and so they can't build.
As I understand it, the, our new ordinance we passed a couple of months ago, the wetlands has to be in place before we can approve the final site plan, so if something materially changes that doesn't made up to what we approved originally, we don't have to approve the site plan.
That's correct.
Let's come back to the board, both for transportation and for.
We got that mechanism to protect us in case things materially change, and it's not what we promised our public.
Yep, all, all based on the fact that sometimes it doesn't happen the way that we see it originally. Right.
If this happened to us and we.
We learn.
It's really an oddity that that happened, really, I mean, to be honest with you, I've never seen it before.
Mr. Deloach has another question.
So with this size development, this is obviously going to be multiple phases, correct?
I, I have not seen anything that says a phased development, and the PD text did not say a phased development, but it will be a phased development.
But they have the options to do as a phased development.
They do, they do.
But they have to get everything approved as if the development is, what, like, they can't say, well, I'm going to do a traffic study just for one phase.
Sure.
They have to do it for the entire, the entire approved PD amount, okay?
Follow-up question, and any road improvements would have to be done upfront for the whole.
Yes, because they're, they're going to, yeah, they're going to have to get approved as if it's however many units.
Yeah.
That's a total amount of units, they're going to have to build the infrastructure for that.
Okay.
Yep, now, we don't have anything about amenities inside, as far as clubhouse, something like that, but outside, they've all got to be done, water and sewer's got to be done, stormwater's got to be done.
So what makes me nervous on this is, and maybe I'm out in left field, but I know we've had another development where we put a timeline on some of the amenities that were going to be built in another development.
I was going to ask that same thing, just.
And I, and I actually got that verified today, so, and I know there's nothing here, which my first thought was, we do that in sketch plan. So, which, that's normal, but I found out that there was another development where we said, hey, before, and I don't know, I don't, I don't know, maybe this is not apples to apples, but I know before it was, hey, you show a swimming pool as one of your amenities, that has to be completed before Phase Two starts. You know, and.
I, I think sketch plan and site plan will determine where, but that's not the time to determine when.
That, that would have to be determined in the, in the PD if we're going to make it a requirement, and so what, and, and you don't necessarily need phases for it, you can simply say, you know, this is going to get proved, what's the, what's the site, how many units are in here?
460.
465.
Okay, so at certain breakpoints that, that, you know, this, this amenity would be complete, and we can ask the developer.
What I'm saying is, we, we, we did it at rezoning, like, right now.
Yeah.
Like what we're doing to another, another project.
Well, and that's what I'm, and that's what I'm saying, it's not too late, it's not too late to include it in there, right, just. Uh, just because it's second reading, you can amend it at second reading, but you'd have to get um, find out uh what is, is reasonable um uh for here. So I would get the applicant up, are they here? And they can address it?
And like I said, to be, you know, and i- it was a pool, so it was one thing, it wasn't, hey, all of your amenities have to be done at X, but I know we did put a stipulation on one of the amenities on another, on another development.
And this has been a problem in the past.
And that's what we want to avoid, we just want to make sure that the amenities are done.
Where amenities were promised and, you know, they literally, um, you know, the developer turned over like three times and uh, you know, and the pool gets, gets done last, you know, type of thing.
But Tim, you're asking, you're asking the applicant, you're asking the applicant to give us a, how much of the amenities would be completed prior to phase two being begun?
What percentage of household, what percentage of units um that get CO'd uh um would trigger um the amenities having to be completed?
Yeah, that's a fair question. Um, and I, I'm assuming we're talking, so there's a lot of amenities across this whole site. What, are we talking about the amenities in that phase specifically, or wait, what, what's?
Do you have that?
So i- it was just brought to my attention, and like I said, it was, and I know, I mean, the, the plan, it, I mean, it's a nice concept plan, it's a lot of amenities in there. So um that, that's, that's great. But this, the other development, it was the, the pool and the pool house. It was, okay, well, the other development, it was, okay, you have all these nice amenities, but we want to see the pool house and pool done before phase two starts.
Right.
So that was really it. I know you can't say, hey, put a timeline on every single amenity, but I guess i- is there, I guess maybe clarify which amenities are in phase one. So, hey, phase one amenities, yes, they, those will be in before we start phase two.
I think what we can, can, can commit on is every amenity in the phase that's being built at that moment will be built in that phase. So we won't go into phase two without the phase one amenities being in place. We won't go into phase three without the phase two amenities being in place and so on through the whole project. We can commit to that.
So I guess a sketch plan, I mean, it'll be identified of what phase one is.
And what the amenities are.
And what amenities are.
That's correct.
Okay.
So that can be addressed where those phase one, phase two lines are, right?
Yeah, at the sketch plan, we can ask.
Twice.
We, we, we can ask them to move those phase one lines to include amenity if there's not enough amenities in there. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I, I think so.
But I like that we're being careful with it, you know, we're.
Yeah.
Because this probably won't be the last one we get asked.
And I probably should have gotten it verified before today, but I got it verified, so I just want to make sure we.
I think we're all kind of learning.
Stay, stayed in line, so.
One other thing, I did question one other thing, um, it showed the, and it's, maybe, maybe I'm overthinking it. The green space, it said, in the, in the PD document was, it should have minimal grading. It's hard to do a soccer field without pretty, doing some pretty substantial grading. I just want to make sure, you know, I mean, it's, they, they kind of conflict each other, and I want to make sure we're all understanding.
Good evening, Travis Park with Coleman Company. So I think the intent with, with the grading was not to have steep slopes, so it could be a usable area, not that it could not be graded in shape to what it needs to be for the function, but the intent was that, was you couldn't have a three to one slope and call that open space, because it's not really usable for anybody, because it's just a field slope.
Does it, does it, yeah, what I saw, and they just mentioned, you know, trying to follow natural contours.
Yes, sir, but that, that was the intent of that.
I, I understand, okay, I just wanted to clarify.
Yes, sir.
Um, it just jumped out at me.
All right, and just a, a point of clarification, I hope, for the applicant. When we're coming back with a sketch plan, it sounds like we need to make sure we have enough amenities in phase one that the board won't have any objection, because that could slow the whole thing down, okay?
Makes sense.
Okay. All right, any other question or discussion? All right, do we have a motion?
But we do need to add, his statement, I guess, needs to be included in the PD doc, right? That, that they will complete, you know, what his statement needs to be.
That, that uh.
Memorialized.
That prior to.
The amenities in phase one, I can say.
So we have this wording right, can you come back up here, um, and so we understand it? Um, uh, prior to approval of um any additional phase, all the amenities in the previous phase will have to be completed?
Yes, we can commit to that, yes, in the previous phase, before we move on to the next phase.
I just want to get it, make sure that's captured.
And then we, we can add that in the text, uh, and then uh, and uh, you know, after the meeting, but that wording is what we're going to put in there.
Perfect, that's great, thank you.
Okay, making a note here, and Madam Clerk, you've got that wording clarified for yourself? All right. So with that uh added to it, the, the amenities of one phase, the first phase will be completed before they begin a second phase?
Or any subsequent phase, really.
Any subsequent phase, yep. With that uh text added, is there a motion to approve the second reading?
Make a motion to approve the second reading as read.
Second.
Mission, Mr. Burdette, second, Mr. Floyd, to approve the second reading, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no?
Nay, I'll vote nay, just because I, I voted against it on the first, first round.
All right, um, so we had one nay, and that is Mr. Deloach. Still uh is approved by majority, so we move on to item number, new business item number one.
Mr. Chairman, I've got to recuse myself, I've got a banking relationship, um, I guess with our vendor there, McGrally Company.
Okay. The clerk would show that Mr. Deloach has recused himself and has removed himself from the bench. The item number uh one of new businesses, consideration to approve amendment number six to, to the contract of roadside mowing services with McGrally Company LLC.
Good afternoon, my name is Danielle Carver, and I'm the procurement and capital projects manager. Um, this is an update to amendment six, adding logistics Parkway, which was accidentally left off the original. The update now reflects the correct roads and fees. Staff recommends alternative one.
This is an amendment to the current contract, this is not a renewal amendment.
Right, it's just an update to the original amendment, to the last amendment.
Okay, to the last renewal, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And so, quick question, I'd, I'd like for us to look at, um, McGrally does a great job, I get that. I was just noticing that in two thousand seventeen, when I came into office, it was fifty-one thousand dollar contract, seventy-three now. I, I believe this is one we ought to look at bidding, just to be sure we're getting the most efficient contract price.
Um, when, when does it come up?
I just want to make that note, probably should come up in November, because it starts.
January, I think, is.
Okay, all right.
Well, the contract starts in April.
Yeah, and we, and we can discuss it there, I can tell you though, that uh part of the issue is um that we keep at, that we keep adding roads to it, and then I don't know if that differential includes the extra um.
It does, it includes some, I, I noticed there was.
Extra cycle that we put in there.
There was some mileage, but when you're talking about two hundred and seventy miles, that, you know, you had six miles, it's not material to the overall contract.
Right, okay, I just want, I just want to make sure you knew that, so.
Well, we've added cycles since that fifty.
So there was two, now we've added a whole third round.
You had the fourth cycle.
Yeah, so that, that, that could be substantial.
Well, I would, no, I was looking at the per-cycle cost.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah, because the per-cycle was forty-six, and now it's seventy-three.
I got you.
You know, it's, the contract's two hundred and something thousand dollars, but.
Yeah, sure.
It expires December thirty-first of twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, you, you just want to make sure that staff is aware that, doesn't mean you have to change, because they do a great job, but it's always good after about nine or ten years to get a competitive bid for sure. And I would encourage you to do that in November, to give any vendor opportunity to secure equipment if they had to do it for the April when the first cutting starts.
Okay, yes, sir.
Okay, any other question, discussion, or a motion to approve alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Mission, Mr. Burdette, second, Mr. Floyd, to approve alternative one, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Hearing no no's, alternative one is approved unanimously.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you. Item number two, consideration to, wait for Mr. Deloach to come back to the bench. Item number two, consideration to approve the first reading of an, of an ordinance to amend uh part two official code section, excuse me, chapter thirty, environment, article X, community tree management of the FEM County Code ordinances.
Yes, sir, um, so at the workshop last month, um, we discussed the community tree management, um, so I wanted to bring it uh before you again. Um, I know we discussed uh sending it out to uh developers and, and folks that wanted to take a look at it. So again, I just wanted to bring it uh before you um in hopes that you've had a chance maybe to look at it a little bit. And staff is recommending alternative number one.
Okay.
Chairman, would it be appropriate to, to delay this a little more, so developers have more time to give input on this? I don't know if any, has anybody?
When, when did the developers get it?
Um, so the workshop was, this is July, so two weeks ago, so.
Two weeks ago, have you heard any comments at all?
I have not, I have not received um any, any feedback yet.
Well, it.
We could always approve it and then amend it some later, right?
Just the first reading, yeah, I was going to mention Ms. Elliott's, I'm sure won't speak.
We, we could do the second reading uh later, for sure.
Yeah.
So let's go ahead and hear from who wants to speak tonight, and then if you still want to make a motion to table, we can, we can do the first reading, but it'll give them thirty days when we come back.
Yeah, whatever makes sense to give them a.
Okay.
Yeah, a chance to, to chime in on it for everybody.
All right, would you like to make some comments on it?
I would, thank you. Hi, I'm Rita Elliott with FEM Georgia Green. I wanted to commend the commissioners and the staff for working on this tree ordinance and trying to improve it. It's nice to see that um hopefully everybody realizes the dire straits our tree canopy is in nowadays and wants to preserve it and actually expand it. Um, we had a couple of questions, a couple of comments, and a couple of recommendations, so I won't, I'll be brief. Uh, but my first questions are, um, we, I don't quite understand how the tree canopy cover requirements are satisfied, satisfied through new plantings. For example, what size trees planted for mitigation of tree loss equate with the tree cover canopy conditions prior to development? Does a two-inch oak satisfy a hundred-year oak that's get cuts down? You know, the canopy of a hundred-year oak is obviously much larger than a two-inch oak. So maybe y'all can just understand it, uh, explain it so I can understand it a little bit.
You want to take a stab at that one for us?
Um, yes, ma'am, so um, and again, we can, we can absolutely look at it, at it some more. Um, I think, you know, there are si- and I, and I, there are size requirements. I don't think, um, you know, there is a way to um have where if, you know, a hundred-year oak is cut down to replace something, something of that nature. You know, we would, we would definitely want to have it in here where, you know, a two-inch oak is not, is not going to replace something, you know, substantial like that. But we would want, you know, we would want to see that replaced. So again, if, if it's not clear, I definitely want to make it clear for you, um, so if.
I think it needs to be spelled out, because otherwise, I mean.
And, and if I can chime in, I, I, maybe a recommendation here is to pull the City of Charleston grand tree ordinance. Um, I know that one has a formula based on it, um, and it's not replacing like for like, but it's repla- re, you know, it's, you know, if you do a, uh, you know, a, a twelve-inch, if you cut down a twelve-inch tree, um, you know, your replacement has to be, um, you know, uh, you know, a dozen um smaller uh, uh, similar like trees or something to that effect. You know, maybe a dozen two-inch trees or something to, to that effect. There's a formula that they use uh to try and make up for it. It's not going to replace the tree canopy, because um uh it's going to take years for even those two.
A hundred years.
Even if you did a dozen of them, those two-inch trees to um uh, you know, to reach a level of maturity where they provide that. Um, but it provides some sort of mechanism so that uh over time, you're more than making up for what you damaged.
Can we send you some canopy formulas, and also Bluffton and other places have even better ordinances than Charleston does? Can we send you that information to consider?
Yes, please.
Okay.
You know, can, we, we can legally restrict what a property owner does to a beautiful live oak tree on their property? Because as, as I was reading through this, I noticed on our property, we can definitely put some heavy hands on, you will not touch this live oak on government property, you know, when we start working on stuff. But on private property, can we actually enforce?
Um, so everything.
Does it have to be incentivized type enforcement?
So I think, um, I think it, it does need to be incentivized, um, and, and I can follow up, of course, with the county attorney with that as well. Um.
But can't you deny a permit if they're going to whack a bunch of hundred-year-old oak trees?
I don't know, that's what I'm asking, because I know one thing we talked about, we weren't sure the legality. We need to make it so incentivized that they'd want to leave it, because they get more lots, or they get something else.
Or maybe both, the carrot and the stick, I mean.
I don't know, Lee, if you can weigh in real quickly without having some research, but can we as a board legally restrict on private land?
This is going to take some time, we, we just need to probably have a better discussion outside of, of tonight.
So we, we'll take that ordinance that she's asked you to look at and some other ones, and get Lee's opinion and see what we can restrict.
And I will say, one of the things we talked about on incentivizing is that in our subdivision ordinance separate from this, um, we um are going to include a street tree program, right? And so that for every lot, um, is it a tree, one tree or two? Two trees uh get planted, uh, and so um that's where you can use your incentive, right? So that if they are saving a grand tree, you know, you can uh potentially get a credit for some of the street trees that you normally would have had to plant. Um, and so, um, you know, it's, that's one of the things we were thinking about when we were talking about um for private property. Um, but it's very difficult, I want to warn everybody in advance, um, uh, you know, when it comes to trees that, let's say particularly trees that are on a lot that's in Kuva, um, uh, if that lot gets timbered, uh, then, you know, the next year gets, um, you know, uh, goes in for, let's say, residential subdivision, um, there's not much they're work with at that time. Um, and so, you know, there's nothing we can do to prevent um somebody who's um uh, who basically timbers their lot.
Clearcuts it and then sells it fucking.
That was my next question, yeah.
For our large subdivisions, which a lot of our properties are large subdivisions, are, uh, were, uh, were timbered uh prior to development.
And I, I think that's an easy solution, is, is we don't approve the, uh, if, if something's been clear-cut, there's a timeframe.
Right.
You know, for growth to come up, I, you know, there are other ways.
And that, and that could be, and that could be something we consider in there. It's just a, it's just a, it's just a little tricky, because we can't interfere where somebody's right to timber their property.
I don't want this to be so restrictive that anybody's got an oak tree can't do anything with the property, though.
Well, that's what I want, that's what I was going to say, I.
Like that.
I have a wood burning fireplace, and I cut four or five oak trees down a year for firewood. I just don't want to.
Nobody's saying you can't cut them down in your own yard.
Not just me, but a lot of people do that.
Trees will regrow, it's a damn tree.
Yeah, but I think we're, we're looking at the, like, the live oaks, not the water oaks that we cut down.
I mean, you can cut all the trees down you want in your yard if you want to have a hot yard, that's your privilege, but I mean.
Exactly.
Yes, but I mean, that's not what we're talking about here. If a developer comes in and cuts down all these oak trees or whatever kinds of trees, they shouldn't be allowed to come into our county, clearcut the hell out of it, leave this a horrible desert and go away. I mean, let's say, I want to do that, in which case, if you want to live in a place like that, I mean.
It, the, the issue is that um for the most part, it, it's too, it's not the developer who's clearcutting the lot, it's the previous owner who's clearcutting the lot.
Possibly.
Uh, and then putting it up for development, and so it becomes a very tricky issue to, to enforce. And to your point, I think, you know, this, this may be, uh, as Wesley had mentioned, as commissioner, as chairman had mentioned, that this is a, um, this does protect anything that the county, that's in the county's domain, which we need to do, because people cut down our stuff all the, I mean, not all the time, but periodically, people will cut down trees in the right of way, right? Um, or on county property, so we need to, we, we, we definitely need to protect that, and we need a formula in case they do do it, how they're going to, uh, how they're going to make up for it. Um, I think the second issue that we resolve is clearcutting um uh uh, large trees in a protected buffer. Um, because the other thing that we're running into is developers coming into a lot, um, clearing it, including the buffer, and then saying, oh, I'll just replant.
Right, I'm all, I'm all aboard with that.
That, that, you know, tho- those are two areas that I think we all can agree on.
We can protect without restricting, like the industrial, they, they clearcut the three-hundred-foot buffer, then they get industrials on.
No, I'm agreeing with that, I just.
Yeah, and so, but I, I think we limit it, going beyond that, we limit it, we, we start off by simply kind of limiting it to developers when they want to come in and subdivide a lot. to developers when they wanna come in and subdivide a lot, um, that they have to attempt to protect the trees. But to my point is, uh, you know, there, there may not be many trees left to get by the time the developer puts it in for subdivision. But I think those are, and that and the credit program, I think, are areas that we can work on this. But I'm glad we had this conversation, because I, you know, was a little bit unsure, uh, on the, on where we stood on the community tree program, but I think this feedback allows us to, um, create something a little bit better.
And I, I, I think it's a fair ask that somebody absolutely has the right to harvest their trees, civic culture, I mean, that is a industry. But, but just know if you do, you may not, it may not be right for grow, if you're in a, in an area that, that, uh, can be developed.
And they could be developed.
An example, if you were to harvest the trees in a buffer zone.
That's different, I mean, well.
I mean, it's not buffer yet, it's not buffer yet, because it's AR. But then you come back six months later and you request for a multifamily zoning or a industrial zoning, you may not be able to, maybe we should have some restriction on hearing that because of what took place. That would, that would just cause people some pause before they clear-cut the buffers and then try to get it rezoned for development.
So, so Mr. Chair, what we've done recently within the last four or five subdivisions, is staff has actually gone out to those knowing that they were gonna clear-cut them for the subdivision, but we went out and marked the buffers. So we made sure that they were, and we learned this from over there in Rogers District before, that they're not always sacred even though they're on the plat. So we now go out and we mark those buffers depending on what the zoning is, and then if you're gonna clear-cut it, you clear it, but you've gotta save those buffers or else we're, we've got the teeth now to go back at.
And that works good if you know it's gonna be developed before.
I agree, yeah.
Tim was bringing up.
It may not always be that way.
What if somebody who's got their timbered says they wanna timber it, and then they go out and ask for rezoning, and now it's too late to save the trees in the buffer?
But, but.
So look at that for us.
To, yeah, to the Commissioner Kiefer's point, is one way we can do it is simply have a, a, a time period that say, if you clear-cut it and try and subdivide it, there's gonna be some mitigation. Or you can't, or you can't subdivide it, right? You can't clear the tree, come back six months later and then ask for a subdivision of the lot. And, but it doesn't mean you can't subdivide, it just means you have to mitigate, right? Where we wouldn't have any requirement to mitigate on the books right now. And so those are, those are kinda things that I wanted to get, feel y'all out on, and if it's something that you think, let's try and put it in pen to paper, come up with some wording on it and then get it back to y'all.
I've had some directional direction to work on that.
That sounds good, um, and of course, that, that's the second best thing, because if it's already cut down, it's kinda, you're mitigating and you're starting again from scratch with these trees.
But we can't, it's, it.
No, no, I think that's a great idea, but I would say, can we also look into adding an incentivization to the person who wants to clear-cut their land before they sell it to a developer? Some other kinda incentive to stop that from happening, and then the fallback is, well, if you clear-cut it, then you can't subdivide it for X amount of time. You know, have an incentive first, and then a little thing, well, if you don't do it, this is what happens.
I don't know what that'd be, but it's possible.
I would think proper replanning of a buffer would be punitive enough.
No, I mean, you, you're, you're losing time, you're losing time. You're cutting down, say, a fifty-year-old tree, you're gonna plant a two-year-old tree, so automatically your tree canopy is gonna take forty-eight years to come back to where you left it. I mean, you know what I'm saying, it's, it's not a one-for-one, it's not an equal thing, you're, you're losing ground every time that happens. So it's ideal to preserve the trees in place when you can.
I mean, if they're growing pine trees, they're not, they're not growing for forty-five years, I mean, they're, they're on a much quicker cycle than.
Well, on a tree harvesting, yeah, I mean, if you're pa, you're paper pulp and stuff, sure, but, you know, you can have grand pine trees that are fifty years old or sixty years old that look wonderful and are great shade as well.
I have one, lightning hit last week and did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did you have anything you wanna?
Yeah, a couple more things, um.
Real quickly, because we need to move on.
So, will the ordinance apply to all industrial institution or residential pub, commercial developments and commercial corridor overlay districts, the tree ordinance?
Yes, it would, it would apply to.
See, it would not apply to all of them, yeah.
Okay, and there's a couple of specific issues that we thought could be really improved on the ordinance besides what we've already discussed, but the critical root zone by definition needs to include by size a tree, because the critical root zone you have now is just horizontal, but as the tree gets bigger, it goes deeper, and that needs to be played into the buffer areas around trees. And the critical root zone by default is critical, it shouldn't be, you shouldn't impact it at all, but under H, the tree protection standards, um, A through K, um, kinda flies in the face of all that. It says the outer half of the critical root zone is, um, you can do stuff to it, you can trench and all this stuff, and, and it says critical for reason, if you're trenching, if you're compacting, if you're cutting, all those things are gonna damage or kill a tree, so those really need to be addressed. And also along those veins, um, you have stuff about utilities are exempt from, um, uh, any issues with tree vegetation cutting, but the issue is not the tree cutting, the issue is when these utilities come in and lay new utility lines, they are wiping out the tree canopy, and not immediately, they're not coming in and the next day, oh god, there goes a hundred-year-old that's dying. Within a couple of years, they're coming in and trenching, putting their trenches in within, I, firsthand experience, within these giant oak trees, they're trenching three feet from the trunk, and they're chainsawing roots in these trenches, chainsawing roots of these live oaks, so immediately when they do that so close to the trunk, you've wiped off a quarter of the root system for the entire tree. So it's not gonna die to the next day, or maybe even the next year.
I hear you, we'll look and see where we can address that, there's other iss, other legal issues involved as far as Georgia power, for example, easements, that they have rights to do certain things that we probably cannot restrict. But it's a good point, we ought to look at that and see if there's anything we can do.
And it's not saying they can't put their trenches there, but all they have to do, they have these tools, they can go underground, four feet under a live oak tree, and miss all the roots and shoot their missiles out the other end, and just start far enough.
You taking that note, we can check and see if that's something we could do as well.
So it's not saying they can't put their utilities, just do it where you don't have to kill everything, all the old trees or big trees. Um, and then under variances for the tree ordinance, um, it, it's very, um, it's not defined, so it's open-ended. It says that if you, if it's a hardship, then you don't have to follow the ordinance, but a hardship could be a, you know, somebody saying, I can't build my three-hundred-fifty-thousand-dollar house here, um, because of the tree ordinance. Well, that's not a hardship if you're a developer and you have a multimillion-dollar one house, it's not gonna break the bank.
I'm gonna suggest to you, because we're not ever gonna remember, these are wonderful comments. If you could, like the developers are gonna do, if you could put these in a document and give them to our staff, so that they can take all the, the, um, comments from the developers as well as yourself and anyone else, so we can actually do something with it, we're not gonna be able to do anything with it just by sharing it tonight.
Sure, sure.
That would hugely helpful, because we'll probably have a couple of.
I'll send them again, we'll send them again.
That'd be great, have you sent them to staff already?
We sent our recommendations initially several months ago, um, and they were good about working with us, but we didn't see anything. I didn't, maybe I missed it, I didn't see any of our recommendations in, in the document, maybe I could've just missed them, I don't know.
If y'all would take the time to make it up for me and get with her and, and go through those items one by one, that'd be great.
Okay, and then just overall, two general comments, um, will the county follow this tree ordinance? So to do that, the county needs to survey the trees, it needs to know what is the tree canopy owned by the county, you know, what shape is it in, what trees do this consist of, as a, you know, baseline measure.
Sure.
Um, and also to be able to protect them, have the staff and, and folks that deal with that protect them. And to know if we're increasing or decreasing our canopy.
Yeah, that's a great comment, and y'all can follow up on that. We might have to do some type of funding to canvass our current property and see what hundred-year-old live oak trees we have, because I've got some on my property too that are seven-hundred years apiece, and I don't want them cut down. We may have something like that, obviously on county property, we ought to know about them early, so, okay?
Last thing, we would encourage, strongly, strongly, strongly encourage, the tree ordinance, the tree lists include mostly native plants. It's a no-brainer, native plants are gonna grow better here, they're gonna lead, need less water, less, less maintenance, um, and they'll just do better, and they're better for the environment as well, so native plants and, um, shucks, what was the other thing, I can't think out of stress.
I'm, I need you to take all that and put it in a document so they can have it, and if you, if you don't mind, if you wanna send it to the chairman as well, I'll make sure the board has it.
Okay, that'd be great, thank you very much.
So we can ask questions at our workshop, that has this been addressed?
Okay, super, thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. All right, I'm gonna, uh, ask that we, uh, table this one, I don't think we're ready to.
I think there's, yeah, there's too much to unpack there.
You wanna just withdraw it, um, and, and then we'll resubmit it when it's ready, so this way we don't have to table it for a definite meeting. We can, we can simply with, we, we can agree to withdraw, uh, and then w- once we get all these things in there, we'll resubmit it.
All right, do we need any official action from the board since they're withdrawing it? I can hear you.
Motion to remove it, yes sir.
All right, do I have a motion to remove the item two from the, um, agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion Mr. Burdette, second Mr. Deloach to remove item two from the agenda, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no, it passes unanimously. The only thing I regret about removing it versus tabling it though, I wanna make sure it stays before us.
Yes.
Um, so.
Definitely.
Oh, don't worry, Chelsea will make sure it gets back on the agenda.
Because out of sight could be out of mind, and we don't want that to happen, too much work's gone into this.
If we could do another workshop in the future on it.
Well, I think, if we can work on it between now and August, in a workshop, that'd be a great time to maybe come up with some good.
A lot of material.
All right, item number three in a new business. Consideration to approve the first reading of an ordinance to amend part two, official code, section thirty-four, article three provisions, flood hazard reduction for section thirty-four point eight-three of the Effingham County Code of Ordinances.
Uh, yes sir, this is Jonathan Holm, county engineer. Um, this is simply just a contradiction between the ordinance and our stormwater management local design manual. What we're proposing is, um, to not necessarily a change in our policy, but just to clean up with the ordinance, yes sir.
That's what it looked like. Any questions, discussion, or motion for alternative one?
I'll make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Kiefer for alternative one, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no, it passes unanimously. Item number four in a new business, consideration to approve the first reading of an ordinance to amend part two, official code, section thirty-four, article three, section thirty-four point eight-four, standards for areas of, of special flood hazard, zone AE with established base flood elevations without designated floodways of the Effingham County Code of Ordinances, and to amend page thirteen of the stormwater management local design manual to reflect the change.
Uh, yes sir, Jonathan Holm, county engineer, again, um, this one is, again, just to clean up, uh, contradiction between the ordinance and the, uh, uh, stormwater management local design manual.
A question, discussion, or motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion Mr. Deloach, second Mr. Burdette for alternative one, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no, it passes unanimously. Item number five, consideration to approve, uh, indefinite delivery contract IDC for engineering and architectural services.
Yes sir, Danielle Carver, procurement and capital projects manager. The professional design consultants selected in the IDC have submitted qualifications and hourly fees for twelve different service areas. Nineteen submittals were received, these have all been reviewed by a selection committee consisting of the county manager, the county engineer, myself, and the Albet group. Out of the nineteen reviewed, fourteen were selected to be considered for master service agreements. The scoring summaries and evaluations are listed in your packets, staff recommends alternative one.
Okay, so everybody had a chance to review them, any questions, comments?
I'll make a motion to approve alternative one, if nobody has any questions.
I'll second.
Motion Mr. Deloach, second Mr. Kiefer to approve alternative one, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no, it passes unanimously. Item number six, consideration to approve a technical service support agreement with Striker for EMS equipment.
Yes sir, Striker has proposed a one-year service agreement for all of the covered equipment and prorated pricing on newer products to create a contin, co-terminous end date, um, for ease of renewal in the future. Staff recommends alternative one.
I got one question, did you come up with that term?
No, Allison did.
I had to look it up.
I, I had, I had to look it up as well.
Great word, I'm gonna use it in my next scramble.
I like it, so I'm gonna keep it in there, so, the word of the day.
It means at the same boundaries.
Yes, sir.
But I thought, I'm gonna use that in Scrabble, whoever came up with.
I said I'm gonna stumble over this, but I like it.
All righty, uh, any questions, discussion, or motion for alternative one?
Make a motion for alternative one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Burdette, second by Mr. Floyd for alternative one, so they are co-terminous in their decision? Co-terminous decision, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All in, any opposed, no. Hearing no, no, it passes unanimously.
Word salad.
Yeah, I love the word, it's a great word. Item number seven, consideration to approve a task order with Thomas and Hutton for professional consulting services for program management.
Thomas and Hutton has been, has proved to be an incredible asset as program management for Effingham County with the increase of capital improvement projects the county has under design, staff recommends alternative one.
Tim needs the continued help of their assistants, I'm sure, in managing these projects, any mo, any discussion or motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Burdette for alternative one, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no, it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number eight, consideration to approve the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five UGA extension office personnel agreement.
Good afternoon, Mark Barnes, finance director. This is, uh, just a renewal of the already existing, uh, personnel agreement that we have with the UGA extension office people. This year, the, uh, the contract amount went down slightly, staff recommends alternative number one to approve the renewal.
Motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion Mr. Burdette, second Mr. Deloach for alternative one, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no.
Mark, got a quick question for you.
Just unanimously.
Um, made me think about, um, at the next meeting, are we gonna approve, um, the library personnel position? Um, I think we left it out, I, I think we need to make an amendment.
Amendment?
Yes, sir.
I, I don't remember which position, but I just remember it was one.
Yeah, it was, um, it was the Springfield Library, um, uh, the additional, uh, assistant librarian position.
Okay, all right, cool, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
All right, last item in a new business is number nine, consideration to approve an agreement with Rave Mobile Safety for mass emergency notification.
Yes, sir, right now, um, Effingham County uses WINS, uh, wireless emergency notification system for our mass notification. And while it is effective, it's not the most user-friendly, um, so what we decided this year was to go out and get proposals from other groups and do demos, and we found that, uh, Rave is honestly probably one of the most user-friendly's and cost-effective, um, so we're just proposing to replace WINS with Rave. And in addition, it won't just be limited to EMA staff, um, it'll also be able to be rolled out to other departments, so if they need to have a backup way to communicate with their staff or citizens, it'll also be able to be utilized there.
Very good.
So like, reg department could use it for?
Yes, sir.
Sounds good.
They're gonna have to re-sign up for this?
No, sir, um, they won't, um, we've worked with this provider, they're gonna be migrating all of our current users, so nobody will have to sign up again.
Yeah, okay.
Very good. All right, any discussion or motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion Mr. Kiefer, second Mr. Deloach for alternative one, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no, it passes unanimously. And that should conclude our new business, and we can move to our reports from commissioners and administrative staff. We'll start.
Yes, um, following up on the last, um, comments I have from the previous me, uh, meeting, I've included a copy of a letter that I received today, uh, on your desk, uh, and it's regarding the twenty-one in McCall light. We had requested, if, just to go back a little bit in time here, um, that when the, uh, signal warrant was approved, it was approved with the condition that the county, uh, acquire and design and build, uh, left-hand, left-hand turn lanes on both sides of McCall, um, uh, and so that's under design right now. And because of right-of-way acquisition and design costs and so on and so forth, that's a time-consuming process. We put a request into GDOT, um, the District Five Office, we're asking that, um, uh, that if we had them put the poles in the place that they will finally end up for the signals, whether we can put the light in prior to installing the turn lanes, uh, for, uh, for, to get it done, we would save about seven months, uh, in time on this. They've agreed to it, uh, and so now we just gonna, now we're just gonna plow ahead, um, simply with the, um, uh, with the signal installation, uh, and then do the turn lanes when we do the roundabout, um, and the realignment of courthouse. So, good news, uh, we got a pretty quick turnaround on that, so they, uh, clearly know the importance of the issue.
So I heard you saying seven months we'll have a light?
What?
Seven months we'd have a light?
Uh, well, we're gonna cut seven months off it, I think it's gonna be less than seven months, um, uh, unless something comes up. There is one issue that's outstanding, is that there's a power line that goes diagonally across the intersection. Um, so I think that is going to be the, you know, getting that relocated is gonna be the biggest challenge. Uh, but once that's done, um, uh, we should be able to plow ahead, uh, get the equipment ordered, uh, and, uh, and get it installed.
Well, Forrest can make a phone call for that, right?
That's right.
I'm just waiting on your call.
Moving utility lines is a big deal.
Tim, do you have anything else for us?
That's all I got.
All right. Madam Clerk, do you have anything for us tonight?
Um, no, sir. Other than just reminding you all again of your strategic planning retreat upcoming in August. Travel day on the fifteenth. Retreat will be all day on the sixteenth and half day on the seventeenth.
Very good. All right. Anything from the other staff? I'll go to the commission to discuss with us. We'll go around the horn.
I don't have anything.
Mr. Floyd, nothing? Mr. Burdette?
Uh, just wanted to check in on some stuff we talked about last week and, uh, with, um, gosh, what's the road? We're gonna chip seal, look into.
Oh, Colbrook?
Yeah, we can't chip seal it because it's too far gone.
Yeah, so, uh, that further creates a little bit of a challenge here. Um, we gotta do a site visit with, uh, with Jonathan and EOM out there to see what our possibilities are. When, and just so everybody knows, uh, we discussed the, how you take over a private road and, you know, whether or not we can save a lot of money just by chip sealing it, then taking it over. Um, uh, EOM, uh, informed us that the, because of the condition of the road, chip seal, um, is not a recommended option. Um, but I have to review that decision with them.
Yeah, we've made any progress with the burn trailer. I get hit up every couple of weeks.
Yes, we do have an update.
Yeah.
Have you been by there lately?
Yes, sir, uh, yesterday.
And nothing has been done?
Um, well, maybe some stuff had fell over.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, it was my understanding that some things were being removed and the process had been started. So, I mean, do you?
I'll pay more attention. I'll be out there this weekend.
Yeah, let me know. Take a look, because that, that's, that's our understanding that, that at least the process had, had started and some things were actually removed. But if that's not the case, let, let me know.
I will. I'll take some pictures.
Okay.
Mr. Deloach?
We got a grass cut.
Sir.
Um, I hope everyone has a safe holiday, especially our public safety folks. I know y'all will be front and center in the trenches. Hope y'all are safe. That's all I got.
Um, just, I wanted to follow up about, um, the T-Splas projects in the, in District Five, just to give a.
Yes, and so we will, um, uh, if you, again, backing up, you recall, you all approved a, um, an L-MIG supplemental and a potential L-MIG, um, list when the, uh, funding becomes available, I think, next week. Um, but also in part of that list is, uh, the second round of T-Splast. Um, and we have a preliminary list that I will, um, be sending out to all of you, um, to approve. And, and, uh, I think we can approve that list. Um, I'll see if we can actually get that on the, on the next agenda to actually, um, and we wouldn't have to war the design on that. I'm thinking probably the first meeting in Au- August. It, depending how quickly we can get the bids back, first or second meeting in August, we can actually get the contract out on all three of them.
Okay.
But we will have the preliminary lease, list at least, um, at next meeting.
And they typically, those contracts, they, they mobilize pretty quickly?
Yeah, I mean, it took, uh, it took over a month for this last one to mobilize. Um, but, um, the difference is they know they're gonna get completed before the end of the paving season. When you do it late in the season, they tend to rush a little bit more because it carries over till next year.
Gotcha. That's all I got.
Um, I got one thing to ask about, and that's the administrative complex. Are they making progress? Are we still gonna be in by the first of September?
Uh, we have to have an update meeting with them. They're making serious progress on the building. Um, uh, I have to find out where they are. Um, they have not indicated any sort of delay with regards to the deadlines that they gave us so we, we can re-occupy our offices. Um, uh, but, uh.
It just seems awful quiet over there.
Have, have you driven back there?
Maybe that's why. I'm just sitting from the front. I don't see.
No, no, you, you gotta go to the back. They've, the, all the walls are up. Um.
Come look out my window.
Yeah, they're, um, they, um, uh, they even, uh, they even started tearing off the roof today. So.
Okay.
Yeah, so definitely take a visit.
I think it would be good, I think it would be good, um, not next week, not this week, because it's Fourth of July week, but next week toward the end of the week. Just have a little update meeting. It seemed to kind of shake their tree a little bit before and might hurt to shake it again just to make sure they're on track, because it is, it is inconvenient for all of us, not, and our staff to be displaced.
Yep.
All right. Is there anything else for the commission or anyone for the good of the county? All right. Um, I was gonna plan to ask for executive session, but I did not get the information that I needed from, um, some of our staff that I want to cover with the board. So I don't have a need. Does anybody have a need for executive session tonight?
No.
We, it can wait till the next meeting, I think. All right. With that, we have a consideration to approve the June eighteenth executive session, um, minutes. I wasn't here, but I'll entertain a motion from those who were to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the executive session minutes as approved, I mean, as presented.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Burdette to approve the executive session minutes of June eighteenth as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Hearing no, no's. They are approved. If there's no other business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Burdette to adjourn this meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Hearing no, no's. We are adjourned.